All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting Wednesday, April 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM, Town Hall Green Room. We will now call the Budget Public Hearing to Order. So the item next on the agenda is obviously to receive public comment on the budgets for both the town and the Board of Education budget. So we had people that were interested in speaking tonight to fill out their name on the list. I guess we'll just call these names out, and then you can come up if you speak. Please speak over here. And then again, when we're done, we'll open it up again if there's anybody else that would wish to speak tonight. So at this point, we will ask Rich Santelli. Santanelli, sorry.
If I could say Anas Kovich.
I know, I'm sorry.
Oh, boy. My name is Rich Santanelli. I live on Dogwood Lane. I've been in town for 49 years. I've been associated with the library for about 16. In my time there, we've probably spent over, close to three-quarters of a million dollars of non-tax dollars in improving the library. We probably get more traffic in the course of a year than any other town organization. Unfortunately, we don't have a union, so, you know, we're subject to when they cut our budget, we cut ours and services. That's the only way we can make up the cuts. We are part of the town budget. I am here to support the town budget, also the Board of Education. I do have grandkids in the system. I don't know if anyone else does, but, you know, from what they said, we're looking at less than $45 a family for a year, which I don't think is unreasonable for things that we have. We're very fortunate, and I'd like to see the library produce the way it's been for the last 22 years. And, like I said, vote for the town budget, votes for the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich Santanelli. Next up, John Olson.
Good evening, members of the council. Chairman Anas Kovich, my name is John Olson. I live at 101 Pratt Road, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the Board of Education budget to support it. I think too often people, we hear about who has kids in school, who don't have kids in school. I have no kids in school, no grandkids in school, no great-grandkids in school, but I want to see economic development. I want to live in a community where kids are educated, and I think it's very important that people understand it's not just about supporting education because they have children in school, but because it's a critical component of our workforce for the future as well as living in a civilized society that we want to have. I also want to speak on behalf of the town budget. I support it with the exception of one thing. I think that we need to move more money from the Undesignated Fund into capital projects. This has been a very tough year for people. We have inflation, gas prices, housing costs going up. It's a lot of strain and pain for people. I was on the Finance Board some years ago. We debated right here whether we should have 12% undesignated or 15% undesignated. And, you know, I know the council has moved forward for 15%, which I can understand that debate was taking place and had. But I think to sit now with 23% and an Undesignated Fund and raising taxes for just to have money rather than providing program and services is something I'm not about. I've always spoken behalf of budgets and supporting them, but one thing I don't support is to have excessive taxation just to carry a balance of that size. So again, thank you for your time, and hopefully you give a consideration.
Thank you, John. Uh-oh. Next one. Aziz?
Aziz.
Aziz? Okay, sorry about that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Aziz Dakhan. I live on Cow Hill Road. I've been a resident here for about 11 years. I want to echo what my colleague John Olson has just said. What I don't understand is why the money that he's talking about, the unassigned government funds, aren't in the budget. Where's the transparency in that? And why isn't it being used towards capital goods, capital work? But the question I really want answered is, where's the transparency in this? I've looked at budgets like most of my -- I'm old. I've looked at budgets a long, long time. I've never seen this in there. Is there -- if there's a line item in here that I'm missing, I'd like you to tell me that, because I don't see it.
There are two.
I mean, there's -- where?
Applied fund balance and appropriated fund balance. You'll note it in the revenue section.
There's $6 million in that line item?
No. What's in the line item is what's being appropriated. If you want the total dollar amount, it's in the audit.
So why isn't that broken out?
It's in the audit, which is available online.
I looked online. This is what's online. I don't see this line item online. I'm not trying to be contentious about it. Look, I don't -- I've never come here to complain about my taxes. I think that the taxes in this town are mostly very fair. I'm just questioning where it is in this line item. So where is it exactly, sir?
The total amount is in the audit as reported and available through the town's website. What you have are the budget sheets, which would show what is being appropriated. There are two line items for where it's appropriated. $250 and then $1.3 million are appropriated at present in the budget. So that's being spent, and being spent on capital projects.
And that's in the -- that's the governmental funds you're talking about?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The unassigned funds.
The Undesignated Fund Balance is in the audit.
You don't have to get stodgy with me, sir. I'm asking a question.
I'm giving you the language as it appears.
Yeah, but you got an attitude.
The Undesignated Fund Balance is in the audit. It is not in the budget sheet.
Well, I don't appreciate the attitude, by the way.
It is not in the budget.
Why isn't it in the budget?
Because the budget is an appropriation of funds. The audit is an accounting of funds spent and recorded. They're two different vehicles for financial reporting.
So shouldn't we be seeing that?
It's in the audit.
Well, listen, how about we do this? Since this is a public hearing and everybody has a chance and an opportunity --
No, I'm going to give you like an option so that maybe, I mean, if you have additional questions and you -- Well, you can teach me how to read the budget. That would be great, but I don't care.
Okay. If you would like probably then maybe to get a further explanation on it and where it all --
I'm trying to get a further explanation.
I know, but this is a public hearing, so we're here to --
That's right.
So we're here to have people speak on behalf of the budget, not for what you're looking for, which is like, I mean, a little bit more of an explanation on what, how the budget works. So if you'd like to do that, you could probably contact the town manager's office, and I'm sure he can go through it with you.
I'm sure he will.
Okay. There you go. Thank you. Next up is Mary Jo Phelps.
So I was at the meeting this morning, and I appreciated what the town manager said and I think what the chair said about how you can't just take from the Undesignated Fund and like, you know, our job is done. But just as last year had extraordinary circumstances, I feel like this year has extraordinary circumstances. Home fuel costs and automobile fuel costs are extraordinary. And so from what I understand, there's about 4.9 million over policy. Is that a correct figure?
Roughly. I don't know the exact.
So I would support spending that down to achieve a zero increase. And I -- part of it is because if the budget goes down, everybody knows what gets cut first, the library, so that it will pass the second time around. And I don't want that to happen, especially when we do have the money right now. I don't want this done every year, but for now, I think it's a good idea. And definitely solidly in support of the education budget. My kids graduated a while ago, but I, like John Olson, I believe thriving communities need thriving schools.
Thank you. Eileen O'Donnell.
Hi, I'm Eileen O'Donnell, 146 Ironworks Road, and I also want to ditto, I feel like everybody took my thunder, what John Olson said. I really feel like we should spend down some of that money to reduce our mill rate and have a win-win for everybody. And that was really it. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Moore.
I'm not good at remembering what I want to say, so I had to write it down. I'm Heather Moore, 123 Glenwood Road. I'm here to speak out tonight in support of the proposed Board of Ed budget. I urge the town council to not make any changes to it tonight and to put it through to referendum as is. I'm a citizen of Clinton. I'm a parent, and I also happen to currently be the Clinton PTA president. I make a point of attending as many Board of Ed meetings as possible and being informed. Excuse me. I've heard all the ins and outs since the fall regarding the budget put in front of you tonight, and I can attest to the time, effort, consideration, and thoughtfulness of all the people behind it. I listened to the eight different cost centers that made their presentations to the Board of Ed. I heard all the questions the board asked after their own reviews of the budgets, and I'm very confident in the elected board members, our superintendents, and department heads to be the experts on what our school needs, especially given the unique needs from the turbulent last two years. But of course, there should be oversight, and that's why we're here tonight. As we no longer have a Board of Finance, it is the town council's job to make the final decisions on these budgets. You, the elected town council, have the final say and are asked to do your due diligence in reviewing these budgets, asking questions and being informed. In light of that, I was pleased to see town council member Chris Bisante at a Board of Ed meeting where the budget was being presented and discussed amongst the Board of Ed. I wish I'd seen more town council members there at those meetings. I also viewed the video of a February 9th town council meeting where Superintendent Mary Ann O'Donnell was invited to present the budget, excuse me, directly to the town council. And there was one town council member that was not at that meeting. I also attended the February 24th town council meeting, which was a chance for the town council, after hearing the presentation from Mary Ann O'Donnell and having two weeks to review the actual budget, to ask questions or have information clarified. Only two questions were asked that night, and three town council members were not able to attend. On March 2nd, the town council unanimously recommended to send the budget to public hearing. And so here we are, we're at the public hearing, and unless the public has any specific concerns that have not been brought to light at this point, I hope the town council will continue to move the budget as is to vote at referendum, as they've already had plenty of time and opportunity to raise their concerns. And also, I'm not as well-versed on the town budget, but certainly plays a big part in my life and my family's life with the library, Clinton Human Services, you know, and Department of Public Works and all of Park and Rec, so I would love to see that pass as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Abby?
It's weird, because I don't have to say Anas Kovich.
You must be from a different part of Italy, I guess. I don't know. So I am Abby Rappacore. I live at 35 River Road in Clinton. This is my 10th year living here. I'm a Clinton Public School employee. I'm a mom of three kids, and I am also on the PTA. I'm involved in Clinton Human Services. I'm involved in the Human Rights Commission. And I just wanted to say off the cuff that I am excited and looking forward to our vote, and I hope that the education budget stays as it is. I also hope that you take a moment to go to the library and see the very first National Arts Honor Society gallery showing, which includes my daughter, Aurora Smith. This is their first year with this National Honor Society. Sometimes the kids that are artists but maybe not so great in school get overlooked when it comes to the National Honor Society. So it's really cool that she will be able to put that on her resume. And also, Mr. -- what's your last name again? Santanelli. Mr. Santanelli's granddaughter. Mr. Santanelli's granddaughter Sadie Lyons is also a junior at Morgan and is part of the National Art Honor Society. So go there and take a look at it, and then consider whether or not it would be a great idea to chop them up. So, thanks.
Thank you, Abby. Next up is Eric Bergman.
Eric Bergman, 115 Old Post Road, Clinton. Dear Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, and of course, Mary. I'm here to commend you for the inclusion of a full-time professional town planner in the proposed 2022-23 town budget. As we well know, and with the ever-increasing complexity of land use issues, the time has come for a higher degree of professionalism and expertise in both planning and development. While the staff, along with John Guskowski and Kathy King, perform Herculean efforts daily, we do finally need a bit more. That said, with the appropriate job description and hiring process, Clinton might just further embrace a notion of responsible development, and following a plan much akin to the POCD could foster an even more vibrant culture of optimism, pride, and community spirit. Clinton's location is essential to our identity. Route 95 corridor, Long Island Sound, 90 miles outside of two major metropolitan areas, a few short hours to the Berkshires, the White Mountains, and world-class skiing in Vermont. While we all must occasionally acknowledge how fortunate we are to live here, we must also realize how fragile these small Connecticut towns can be, and we must be vigilant to protect, preserve, and guard against the insidious development which often benefits only a few at the expense of the many. Directly and indirectly, a town planner, the right one minds, you can help with resilience, economic development, transportation, housing. Furthermore, a town planner will help our communications with our local COG, state of Connecticut, and possible federal monies and grants. In addition, a full-time planner can save the town money by the following ways: shepherding applications through the land use approvals process without procedural errors, writing grant applications on behalf of the town for capital improvements, focusing on long-term planning instead of administering a land use process, and then help the town implement its GIS system. So I thank you, commend you, and encourage you to retain this ever-important item in the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Next up is Art.
My name is Art Keever, Acre City of Court, lifelong resident of the town. I had the opportunity to preview and re-watch the budget proposal on February 24th. First of all, I would like to commend the department heads, the town council, and the town manager for putting together a great budget, I think. I think it's a well-done budget. I agree with Eric on the final inclusion of the town planner. Hopefully, this time it goes through for all the reasons he said. And I also love the fact that we're going to try to not bond for pavement and redoing the roads in the future. That's been a long time coming, and it's been brought up several times and always gets axed. So those are two great things with the town budget. Like, of course, it's the Board of Ed budget. I agree with it wholly. There's been a lot of talk about the Undesignated Fund. I understand it. I also noted in that presentation that it was noted that only like $1.5 million more could be moved to, from the Undesignated Fund over to the budget to cut that down. This town has a history of referendum failures, and besides the library or sports teams always being threatened, it always seems that we move on capital budgets. We always move the capital or cut the capital. And we've been caught by that before. Instead of fixing a roof, we patch it, and then it costs more money down the road. So I'm sort of, I understand the ask of moving more money over. I'm not upset if you don't, because I'm hoping that it'll be used in future capital in a nice proactive way and not necessarily, you know, I don't want to see you don't move it over now, and then in September you come back and ask for a new truck, and it goes to a town meeting where 40 people are voting on it instead of 4,000. There's a reason that $300,000 limit was put in the charter, is so we didn't try to push things through by a vote of 40 instead of 4,000. So I just hope that if it does not move over, that it's least responsibly used in the future. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Erica.
Erica Gilvin, 2 Alden Drive, but I am speaking here tonight as Chair of the Board of Education. And I've shared with you often how much I appreciate our collaborative relationship and how grateful I am that we can have meaningful conversations that have such an impact on the citizens of our town. I do want to just ask that you put forward the Board of Education budget with no reductions for two main reasons. The first is that we have a staff that is highly qualified and committed to both the education and the needs of our community. And the second reason is that we have students who are worthy of additional support coming out of the pandemic. However, our town deserves responsible, appropriate funding, or funding requests, I'm sorry. Therefore, we have presented with you with a prudent, fiscally conservative budget that was developed, vetted, and given to you to be considered as part of the bigger picture. So I thank you for all of your hard work, and I respectfully ask that you consider our request with that perspective in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. So that's the end of the list that we have here. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Anyone else? All right, here and done, then we will look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Second?
Second.
No in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you all. We will now move to item number four, which is the call to the town council, calling the town council special meeting to order. At this point, we'll go to item five, which is to discuss and take possible action on the budget. The floor is open.
You know, in years past, not many, but in a couple of years, at this point in the discussion, the tables were turned so that the council members were looking directly at each other and were able to communicate a lot more clear. Would it be possible to do that, to bring the tables closer together so we can actually speak face-to-face? Or no? That does not look like a popular --
Well, do you want to just move over here so you can see everybody?
Well, I'm talking --
It's being recorded anyway, that's right.
I don't want to put my back to the public.
All right. Everything's recorded, so.
Everything's recorded.
Yeah.
Come sit here, Carol.
I can see you, and I can see the public.
All right. Okay.
Maybe they want to see your back, Dennis.
No, it just makes it easier to have discussion. It was a circle, and they were able to have eye contact, and it was --
I know, but then you'd have people that were behind, their back would be to the public.
Gotcha.
Boy, if that's the easiest thing we got to talk about tonight, we're in good shape.
Not by a long shot.
All right. Where would we like to begin? I guess we did have some questions this morning as far as numbers and final figures from Carl, so I guess we'll start there, and then we can kind of open it up and kind of figure out where we are and move from there.
I'd just like to make a statement, just because if there is a little confusion out there. I guess the question was asked, how much money was applied from the designated surplus already towards capital? And already, $1,345,000 has been taken from the Undesignated Fund, or proposed to be taken from the Undesignated this year by the town manager. I hope that sort of helps your questions here. So there wasn't like, we didn't take anything, sir. There was $1,345,000 already taken out of the Undesignated to appropriate to buy items in the capital budget. So I just wanted to make that statement, just for that reason.
And to be perfectly transparent, there is 5.2 million left. 5.2 million.
So what's going around now would be budget adjustments. This is the specifics of what I alluded to this morning in broad stroke. So first up would be a reduction to public works under landfill costs by $3,460. The fundamental assumption of tip fee for MIRA is now lower than what we had assumed when we built the budget, which allows for a reduction to be made. An addition needs to be made under public works for diesel and gasoline fuel to reflect current commodity prices for gasoline and diesel, so that would be an addition of $45,690. Under general government other, our contribution under the state municipal employee retirement system, the indication we received from the state requires that to be increased over what was assumed in the budget, so that needs to go up by $3,600. Also, under general government other, health insurance can be reduced by $53,700. We've been moving people who deserve, who shouldn't be on town's active plan and into Medicaid and the like, so that was confirmed for, by our insurance consultant this morning, that there is, one individual can move off and into another product, so there's a cut that can be made there. And then under capital, also as I noted this morning, the animal control officer vehicle can be delayed, so you can cut the $33,000 out of capital. Then under revenue changes is increasing the amount of applied fund balance by $274,000. That would get you to a mill rate that has no increase in the rate of taxation. You have to appropriate the fund balance, so it's appropriated under capital. The second page shows you how the $274 would be appropriated, so right now, the fire apparatus replacement reserve is proposed to be funded by tax dollars. Now it would be funded by the fund balance appropriation, and not quite half of the funding asked for sidewalks would be funded by fund balance, and the rest paid for by taxation. So that gets you to a zero mill rate increase.
Carl, I am so impressed. I am so impressed that you have delivered a budget with a zero increase with tapping $274,000 out of the Undesignated Balance. That's Herculean. That is huge, and our town manager deserves a huge amount of credit for doing such a phenomenal job, and thank you. Believe me, I have been home for the last couple of hours printing up my list of who is going to give back what, and I feel that, but listening to the audience and hearing that people, believe me, there was more incorrect information delivered in those first 20 minutes than I've heard in the last year, but the general opinion was to tap into the Undesignated Balance, which I do understand. And someone made a comment about how the money disappeared. Well, anyway, we're not going to go into that, but there's never using the Undesignated Balance without a severe and immediate need to use that money. We don't just, I mean, I'm thinking that maybe perhaps that money was Storm ECIS last year, that just came out of nowhere and devastated the town and caused a whole lot of damage, and we pay for everything upfront, and then we wait to get reimbursed by whatever sources there are. But anyway, that was a question that was brought up. But I don't know how you guys feel, but honestly, I would make a motion to move to accept Carl's -- oh, wait a minute, I do have one question, though, before we do.
Before you do, we would have to make the cut, the make-o-cut first.
Well, we, yeah.
You'd have to agree to make the make-o-cut first.
Right, but I want to ask Mary Ann. Last year, the board -- Right, but I, I want to ask Mary Ann, last year, the Board of Education came up with a $700,000.
I know, but we're, this is us talking. We're not going, we can't get the public back into the.
So you get asked the chair.
Mr. Chair, last year, the Board of Education had about a $700,000 reduction in their health insurance for the upcoming year, probably right about now. Is there any word on whether they will have any sort of savings in that same area this year?
Carl?
As of right now, no. The town and the Board of Ed have the same healthcare plan. So we have an indication from them. We do not have an update from the state partnership plan as to where the rates will finally land for next fiscal year. So they're delayed in getting us those numbers.
Okay, but that still may come down the pike, perhaps.
It could come down the pike. It could also come down the pike being higher with increased utilization during COVID. So it's not clear.
Didn't they wear masks? Didn't they flatten the curve? Well, anyway, I would like to make a motion then that we reduce the capital plan by the make-o vehicle with an assigned value of $33,000 or request of $33,000 and move $274,000 from the applied fund balance over to the, I don't know how to phrase this, to, to bring, well, it's not, yeah.
You want to increase the amount of applied fund balance?
Increase the amount of applied fund balance.
By 274.
By $274,000. I'm so good at this, right?
And the 274 is to be split on fire department apparatus reserve at 250 and public work sidewalks at 24,000. You would also need to concur with the other factual adjustments that are on the sheet of paper I gave you.
What he said. I made that motion.
And then the make-o vehicle?
I said that.
Okay, so seconds? Okay, any other further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Hmm?
May I take this opportunity to amend that?
You would have to, yeah, you would have to friendly amendment with Carol, so what would you?
Okay. I would like to add to the $1,345,000 appropriation that you've made, Carl, to the capital. I would like to add $1,124,000 that will make that equal to the same amount that you used last year, which was $2,269,000. The same amount you used last year to lower the mill. So I'm using your numbers that you used last year and I'd also like to refer to the Town of Clinton Fund Balance Policy that was written last year, that speaks to unassigned fund balance may be committed for a specific purpose by formal action of the town council. An example of committed fund balance would be an appropriation for the future year's budget as determined when setting the mill rate. And that was done last year and I'd like to see it done again this year. The difference is last year, you completely spent down the excess and this year it still leaves you with 4.3 million.
So where do you want that applied to?
What would the specific?
The capital projects as you did.
You've got to be specific to the projects you would want to apply that to.
You mean what specific projects?
Yeah. You'd, that, that, you can do that, but then the follow-up is you would have to tell, you would have to give us a list of these projects that you would want completed to use those funds.
Refer to the projects that you already have on the list.
I know, but they.
You would have, you have to do what?
Oh, you mean?
You'd have to go in and annotate what you would want to see.
Christine, do you have any projects, sir? So I'm just looking at the total for it. Yeah, I don't know that we have.
Total for all capital expenditures is $2,714,416 with what was included in the budget as well as what's in the sheet here. The balance of capital projects that are not funded by fund balances is $1,095,416.
So what?
You're already at a zero mill rate increase with the 274 being utilized, so.
Yes, this would take the mill rate down six tenths of a point.
Carrie, what was the total number you're looking for?
The total number, which would be the same as last year, $2,269,800 or 269.
I'll second that.
Is that an actionable motion without specifics?
Are you going to?
You're going to be specific to what you're using the money for, right?
Carl, could you help me be specific on that?
That's your job.
So I, I think the best methodology, if you take your capital budget sheet and just, I'm trying to cross check with the items that have been added this evening, cross check it against that and look for the projects that have been moved over to the town council recommended line items.
You're basically funding everything out of fund balance. Aside from, which I also need a direction on, I was de-authorizing old projects, taking those dollars to fund other things that got cut. I'm assuming the council's still okay with that because that's using existing dollars and then you're just funding everything else here with fund balance.
Can we go through those specific projects, Carl, so we all have them and we have an understanding of those?
They're right here.
Not the, not those, Carol, I'm just talking about the other ones.
You want me to go over the entire capital plan?
No, no, not the entire capital, the other projects that you referred to that we offset already.
When we did our budget reviews, I was proposing to de-authorize some older capital projects, sweep those balances and use them to pay for new projects. Those were projects that I then cut at my level. It then flushed through on the council side, but you did not actually say you wanted to do that. So we do propose to de-authorize a chipper of the public works and another piece of equipment that we're determined not to be needed, sweep those balances and then appropriate 12,000 of that towards air conditioning units in the land use department as a replacement. So it doesn't appear in the budget anymore under the assumption that the council agrees with sweeping those balances. Then there was some movement within the Board of Ed, taking excess balances that they were carrying on projects and moving them. So we were taking 22,409 in old funding for Elliott Roof. It was an outstanding balance. Re-appropriating those dollars towards refinishing and repainting the floor at Elliott. We also made the decision, or was recommended, to take an excess balance that was sitting in the Elliott water pipe replacement, prepare, de-authorize that and use that to fund resurfacing the tennis court at the morning school. Didn't get any action from the council on those. I'm assuming you're on board with that, that concept.
Just looking for the land use air conditioner. Was that under public works? Did that get allocated under there?
Yep, that would have been under public works.
Oh, there, just three at the bottom.
Heard from the bottom, FY23, TW, land use, AC unit six replacement. So you noticed that it was cut. The proposal is to fund it conceptually by moving money from old projects to fund new projects.
So this would put a mill rate at what? If this went through?
29.1.
That's also assuming we know the finalized, this grand list.
Yes, the grand list.
That's still open here. And is the governor's?
Facing everything else. So the grand list, after the Board of Assessment Appeals finished its work, there's an additional $581,000 value that was added back to the grand list. That was already baked into the assumption that I used when I put this together to get you to zero. I already, I already picked up the growth in the grand list.
And we, and the state budget's finalized as well, the governor's?
No, the state budget is not finalized. The property tax cap on automobiles is not finalized and I think it's still a question mark as to whether the town will be made whole with the way it was proposed. The way it came out, we were not going to be made whole. We were going to be short.
And that's going to be a permanent shortage, it sounds like every year.
Be a shortage going forward and then that's, that's a policy decision that we made in our.
Is the DCS finalized?
We budgeted based on the governor's proposed budget.
Okay.
So it's always better to budget on the governor rather than appropriations committee because that never sees the light of day.
I know.
When they go into negotiations.
Keep in mind also with your motor vehicles, what's happening in the market right now is inflating them, the, the inflation taking place with the current motor vehicles as well.
Any other discussions?
The shortfall there, Christine, was kind of minimal.
Pardon?
The shortfall wasn't that great with 30.5 versus something else.
So I wonder, we have two open motions.
What now?
Do we have two open motions right now?
I amended, I asked to amend.
Oh, okay.
Your motion and her amendment to your motion.
We have a second to her answer.
So it's up to you whether you choose to accept the friendly amendment or to stick with your original motion. Yes.
Personally, I do not choose to accept the friendly amendment.
You need to move forward with the original motion.
We have to vote on that one first? So the current vote is 274 zero mill rate. Dennis, you have a question?
No, I just want to make another statement. And I know a lot of people just know what I'm going to say and maybe a lot of people don't understand the value of it. One of the reasons that we try to keep that undesignated as high as we can is for a purpose of long-term saving you tax money. For instance, the manager was just notified about a week ago from Moody's that they're willing to boost our town rating up. Well, that may not sound like a lot. It didn't sound like a lot to me until I got on the Board of Finance and other things through the years. But it does mean a lot because then when we go out to borrow, and we're going to do a lot of borrowing in the next couple of years, believe me, my friends, we're, you know, we have some big projects that we're going to have to bond. When we do, we're going to save money on those bonds by having the level that Moody's and what's the name of the other?
Standard and Poor's.
Standard and Poor's has got us at. And so I just want to say that I know, and I like, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Carrie. But sometimes, yeah, right now, we're going to do the nice thing and, you know, we're going to look good to the public. Hey, we cut the taxes, ba, ba, ba. But in the long run, we might, that might be a disservice. We might be better off keeping our ratings, getting our ratings high, knowing all the money we're about to spend in the future. And as you know, there are some big projects coming that we could probably save more money to the taxpayers in the future in our indebtedness. So I think it's easy for us to be the nice guys tonight and just say, oh yeah, let's just do this. And everybody will go home and say, boy, these guys cut the taxes. But that's why this man sits in that chair, because he's looking not for today, not for tomorrow, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the line. Because all the time, we're not going to have that big bucket of money to take out. There's going to be a time, and it's almost there now. I mean, we may have another year of good times where we might get a little extra money. Let's face it, we were lucky enough, folks, we sold the high school. So we picked up 2.2 million dollars here. That's not going to happen every year. So that surplus is not going to go jumping right back up to three, four, five million dollars. Once we start cutting it and cutting it, and, you know, we won't have the means to replenish it. I'll say this in a very selfishly way. We have been a very lucky town committee since we started this. There's always been this extra influx of money coming in. We've gotten money from FEMA that was oldest for years. We've always had this influx, but that's going to stop. And so I think we have to look at it long range. I would be very, very satisfied to go with why we put this man in this office. We're getting back to zero, sure, but I'd like to have to cut more for everybody. But I think he himself, just so the people understand this, because maybe they weren't at the workshops, I know some of you were, before, when all the agencies came and brought their proposals to this man, he cut 640 something thousand dollars before it even came to this council. And I say to people on the street, you think that would ever have been done before in the past, my friends, by the old fashioned board finances and stuff? No. I was down there for eight years myself. I know we would have never made drastic cuts like that. So he's done the best he could, tried to get us down to zero. Now tonight, he's got us at zero. I think that's, I feel comfortable that, I think you would feel comfortable that. I think if we walk out that door tonight with a zero, by God, we've done a pretty good job. And so that's basically how I come across. And that's why I'm sorry, Carrie, I would not support taking more out of the, if we had to, to get to zero tonight, I would have done it. If we were a couple hundred thousand short, I'd have supported you 100%. Let's get there to get to zero. But I think, and I think you were on board and so was Chris, we came here, starting the budget process to get to zero, not below zero, but to zero so that people would have no increase. I've said my set.
In response, in response.
Sure.
I do find the excess very excessive, but I am extremely grateful that the mill rate is zero because the mill rate going up was what bothered me most. And I am extremely grateful that we did not touch those, those budgets because I very much believe in investing in our town and believing in our town and having strong schools, libraries, DPW, fire. We have to believe in ourselves and we show that by investing. And so I am thankful.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add too that not only do we have the regular services, but we're also getting a town planner.
Yeah.
For nothing. I'll give it that way, guys.
Increasing the efficiency.
Yeah.
Christine?
Not to poo-poo a 0% mill because I think that's important in light of inflation. There was an opportunity last year, we did not apply the 2.2 million from the old Morgan sale to last year's budget. So we did have an opportunity last year to reduce the mill from zero. I think we should have taken that last year and that would have supported what Carrie's ultimately trying to do. I would be supportive of some of Carrie's points in the budget and reducing it. I'm not sure wholly the entire amount, but I think we could find perhaps a percentage that would help ease certain people in the community. That, you know, we currently have 6.5% in the federal poverty rate in our town. There's 91, 901 children on SNAP benefits in our town. So anytime we can take the opportunity and help support those in need, I think we should do it. I understand if we're not going to get a motion forward to reduce it further, but I do want to highlight the need in our community is growing. And I think we need to be cognizant of it and make sure that we continue to allocate funding through human services and the programming that is needed there to help support those in our community. Also, I just wanted to touch base on, when we're talking about future projects and we're going to be bonding significant amounts of future, uh, future projects, I get concerned because we keep saying that we're going to try to not bond as much. we keep saying that we're going to try to not bond as much, so if we have an undesignated fund that's going to allow us to use that in the future, I want to make sure we're talking about that. I want to make sure we're talking about grant opportunities, not going directly to bonding because that sort of, we're going to be coming out of the next couple of years, the Morgan School and the bonding for that and I think that will give us further opportunity to bring revenue back into the town, into the town budget and hopefully we will not have to continue to bond at that level. So I would be, again, just a little concerned about the conversation of bonding on big projects, so.
Anybody else? All right, pick a vote. So Carol's motion is to then make the adjustments to get us down to the zero mill rate, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstained, passes? Thank you very much. And before we go, actually. No, we would hold the whole total? Yeah. I just wanted to say to everybody here on the council, thank you very much for all the work you've put into this. Obviously, I know people are passionate about the budget and what we want to do here in town, what we're trying to get out. So thank you to everyone because obviously it's a lot of work. Thank you to all the department heads, thank you to everybody in town, you know, for all the work that you've done to get us to this budget, Board of Education. It's important for us, echoing obviously Carrie's thoughts that it's very important for our town to continue down this path and continue to do what's in the best interest of everybody here in our town.
Can I make a comment too?
Sure.
So I think everybody here tonight expressed an interest in how the budget process works and hopefully next year you will take part in the budget hearings that are held all through February. That is a time to come in and express your opinions and if you don't like what you're hearing, that's a good time to let us know what it is that you have an issue with because at this stage of the game, it's a little, well, it's not the appropriate time to be making big changes, but please come to the hearings as the departments go through and voice your concerns and let us know what you're thinking at that point.
All good. All right, so the motion, and the town council of the Town of Clinton hereby recommends to the annual town meeting on May 4th, 2022, a town government budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023 in the amount of 21,876,635 and adjourned to referendum on May 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Next, the town council of the Town of Clinton hereby recommends to the annual town meeting on May 4th, 2022, an education budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023 in the amount of 37,789,236 and adjourned to referendum on May 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes? Thank you again, everyone. Thank you for everybody who came out tonight.
Thank you, Carl.
Motion, Aaron?
We move.
Second.
Second.